Okay, board members. We shall begin the audit committee work session. We have two topics. We are given an hour. But as you all know, we are 75 minutes behind the schedule. So that... I'm not blaming anyone. We can make up the lost ground. The first topic is audit plan. This is pretty much straightforward. And I will be asking Teresa Weatherman to tell us what that proposed audit plan includes.
The interim or the proposed audit plan that we have here is just work for July through December to get us through the current calendar year. This plan is divided into four sections. The first section being work that is currently underway, or at this point mostly finished, and was part of last year's approved audit plan. Section two, which starts on page three, future audits. These are audits that were part of last year's audit plan that we did not get to because of other assignments and duties that we were doing. And it lists the construction audit, effective and efficient use of bond funds. Section three, we've listed proposed audits for the FY '15 plan. And in some cases, and we discussed this at Audit Committee, these could... The first two could be considered part of last year's approved plan as it stands. And time and attendance accounting being the only brand-new audit that is listed there. The business process turnover audits are consistently looking at schools where the principal or finance tech have changed. As it stands right now, we have about 48 of those that need to be done between now and December. And then the contract management, that you could consider part of last year's audit plan because it is dealing with construction, but this could have a scope expansion which would take it out of the construction realm. That's an overall look at contract management as a whole for the division. And then section four, professional development and other administrative duties, that's just the general tasks that take place inside the audit office.
Thank you. Could I ask a question as to why this only covered July through December 2014? If you could explain to the board members.
Oh, I was gonna say, we talked about that. Because of the proposed structural change of the office, if a cha... What we wanted to do was make sure all of the staff were working on approved topics during the transition. We would bring back to the board topics for the second half of the fiscal year once we find out what changes may occur in the office. And that's essentially why we were doing that. Take us through the transition period.
And we are scheduled to vote on this Thursday night?
Correct.
Okay. With that, I'll take comments and questions from board members. Mrs. Smith.
I guess my comment is more long-term and process for what happens after the December 2014 timeframe. I'm fine with what's in this plan right now, but... And the board will vote on this. So part of my questioning is about then workload for staff. Are we keeping staff busy? And wherein is the timeframe for the next plan to be developed and the board to approve it so staff isn't sitting around not having work to do?
We have several topics that we will bring forth to the Audit Committee that can come to the board later in the fall. We're waiting to see what type of changes the board votes or approves before determining what direction we're headed now. In terms of staff workload, there will be enough work with the turnover audits and other topics and special requests that we get periodically. If it looks like we're going to be getting to the point where staff are going to be needing work, we'll be coming back sooner rather than later.
Anyone else? If not, very good. We'll go to the next topic.
Thank you.
Next topic is, I told you that, we'll make up the lost ground. Next one is reviewing or re-reviewing draft auditor general job description. We did the most of a discussion of this at the last, you know, work session. But since then, there were some board members who had some questions regarding especially the reporting structure from, you know, if the board decides to create and adopt this new position, auditor general position, how the auditor general will be reporting to whom? So I think, rather than doing it dead at the board table Thursday night, it might be useful to spend some, you know, a few minutes at the work session today. Mrs. Smith?
You know, one of the things I noticed when I was reviewing the auditor general position and then also looking at the school board auditor and the audit manager position, in the second two positions I mentioned, the supervision is general direction from the school board. And I think that there should be consistency in that with the auditor general position. I don't think it should be received general direction from the school board audit committee. I think it should be from the school board. The other thing that I would like to know what my colleagues think about is that I don't know whether we should add receives general direction from the school board based on the audit plan. When I look at this position and I read general direction, I'm a little concerned with what does that mean? Because I think when we hire somebody for an auditor general position, this isn't about them getting any kind of day-to-day or weekly direction from school board members. Their work should be set out. It should be somebody that's hired that's capable of doing the work. And if issues come up, we have a process. So that's my advocacy, that we at least change it that receives general direction from the school board and perhaps add based on the audit plan. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Smith. Mrs. Scherz.
I would agree with Ms. Smith that there should be some consistency across the positions. I do think that potentially it won't just be the audit plan and that there could be some complexity that comes into the reporting structure. So I wouldn't want to delimit us to say based on the audit plan. So having the consistency across the positions, you know, is wise. But I would hesitate at this point to expand as directed by the audit plan because I think that this is a kind of a more fluid situation for right now.
Another board member? Ms. Strauss.
Yeah, I agree that there needs to be consistency across the positions. However, I think right now I am much more comfortable with saying general direction from the school board as based in the audit plan because I don't... I'm a little reluctant to go forward with something that was left broad as to what this person's job is going to be. So if in the future we wish to discuss or change, that is obviously up to the board. But it was my understanding that this is part of the audit staff and the audit plan provides the work plan for the audit staff and it is approved by the school board. That was the direction that I certainly thought we were taking. If we wish to change that in the future, but if we're going to hire someone for this position, that's my understanding of where we're going for now.
Okay. Mrs. Strauss done with Mr. Ann Kofax to be followed by Ms. Hines.
I'll be quite candid. Ms. Smith brought this to my attention at the end of the last work session. She was not there. And I do think it was an oversight and an omission on my part. I was managing that work session. So I do agree with you and Ms. Strauss, thinking at this point in time, it should be, you know, receives general direction from the school board based upon the audit plan because that is where the work will come from. If we want to change it in the future, I think that can change at that time. But right now, I think that's where we need to go and be consistent. And I think that's the right way to proceed.
Ms. Hines?
Yeah, I just wanted to ask, if we say general direction... See, I can't actually... Can we get it up here? That part of it that talks about who supervises? Because my iPad is being a nuisance. I can't get this supervision. General receives... This is for the auditor general. Receives general direction from the school board audit committee. Okay. So what we would... What we're talking about replacing that with is receives general direction from the school board and then maybe based on the audit committee. Oh, good. The audit plan. Okay, good. So when we say general direction from the school board, we are assuming within that a majority of the school board, right? I mean, whenever we say that, that's... Okay, thanks.
Mrs. Reed.
I agree that it should read that it's the all of the school board that are the supervisors. And I don't have a problem with them focusing on the audit plan, but what I don't want to do is tie our hands if this person could be nimble enough, if something else does arise that we as a group feel should be looked at. You know, so that would be the only caution that I would have is, you know, we don't want to be so rigid that we say, whoops, it's not on this document, you know, they can't do it. So that would be my only caution there. And my other comment, as long as I have the floor, is that I'm still a little uncomfortable with the CPA language in here. It says preferred. I don't know, it does... I just, knowing HR the way they do, will they see that and automatically weed out people who don't have a CPA on first blush? I don't know. But I would hate... Because I view this person as potentially, you know, a very broad-based individual. And so I just want to make sure that we're not shooting ourselves in the foot. If you say preferred...
Preferred means anyone that may apply. And then I believe you all saw all applicants for the last position that you all hired, if I'm not mistaken.
Yeah.
And so this, you would be able to see all applicants.
I think we had a plane-up discussion on that qualification.
Right.
So let's try to limit our discussion for today.
Just reiterating, just... Okay, thank you.
Supervision and reporting structure. Are you done, Mrs. Reed? Are you done, Mrs. Reed? I have Mr. Stork and then Mrs. McLaughlin. Mr. Stork.
I'm comfortable with the suggestion people are making. The only thing I think needs to be in here is the role of the Audit Committee in relation to the auditor general because it is a little bit more unique than our other roles. So, and I don't know the specific language, but I think we've captured the core. The school board clearly will be identifying and providing the general direction. Maybe the more specific oversight or I don't... And that's what... We need to talk about that because what that is, is... And I just got done looking at the governance manual, and I don't really see any specific language in here about... It just says the... This is the way it stands right now in the governance manual. The Audit Committee, "charge: To oversee the Office of Internal Audit and conduct an annual evaluation of the school board auditor, to review the annual audit plan and audit budget prepared by the office and submit its recommendation to the school board, and to review audit reports and proposals and take action to implement recommendations or forward them to the school board as appropriate." The school board shall have final approval... Excuse me. Shall have final approval authority in regard to the audit plan, the audit budget, and the implementation of any significant recommendations. So clearly, this section will need to be changed to address what we're changing here. But I think we need to have some connection to the role of the Audit Committee in that regard, to formalize that and to be sure there's no misunderstandings about what that role is. My advocacy would be to have that in some sort of, as a maybe more of a day-to-day oversight or something. I don't know. And that may not be even...
So, Mr. Stork, you're talking about the governance manual. We need to update...
Well, I'm talking about this job description.
This job description.
Yes. Because we reference in here, general oversight by what we're suggesting changing to, seems to be, you know, support for that, consensus for that, to change it to general oversight by the school board and not the Audit Committee. But there is a, I think, a more special role of the Audit Committee with overseeing the auditor general as well. And that needs... I think we should be explicit about what that is.
So what I was asking you is, it sounds as if you're advocating clarifying the role of Audit Committee vis-à-vis auditor general or office internal.
That's correct.
I think that should go into governance manual as opposed to auditor general's job description because that's the role of Audit Committee.
Except that the auditor general will be, yes, they only report to the board, but they're going to have, in essence, a of sorts day-to-day responsibility to report to a committee of the board. I mean, they're going to be advising and engaging and discussing issues on a regular basis with a committee of the board. And I think that that needs to be clear to that position, what that... That they have a reporting responsibility to the Audit Committee itself.
Okay. I have Mrs. McLaughlin next.
It's fortuitous that I followed Mr. Stork because the more he talked, the more I started thinking about how maybe we could accomplish where the board's going with the change, but also capture what he was describing for the Audit Committee. And so the first thing I just wanted to say is I appreciate Ms. Reed's concerns. What I'm very pleased to see is that because the language says "or," then it's identifying all of those different certifications as having value. And because I'm so pleased with how this board has gone about with its direct hires, we really will have the opportunity to review all of the resumes and really make sure that with the guidance of HR that we've identified all the best candidates. So that gives me great comfort. And being able to see the resumes is how we have that reassurance. In terms of what... Where the supervision received and given, one thought, Mr. Moon, is we could say receives official direction from the school board. Well, it's one thing to think about. But then general guidance from the Audit Committee. That's one possibility because really what you're talking about is the official direction comes from this full board. But there's going to be some general guidance that comes from the Audit Committee that works directly with the auditor general. So that's in my mind sort of how you capture both. And then, you know, how this board want to entertain doing that. But I do support Mr. Stork's desire that somehow we capture the fact that the matter is the Audit Committee will be working more directly with the auditor on sort of the monthly issues. And since we only meet once a month for our official work sessions, it's in my mind a way to make sure there's more dialogue. And again, you're talking guidance, not direction.
I have Mr. Velkop next.
Thank you, Mr. Moon. I could kind of sense where you're going there, Mr. Moon, and I completely agree. We should avoid approving job descriptions as a board, and anything that is of substance really needs to be policy that we put in governance. So, I mean, I think it's useful to have those things here, but I hope we're not going down that path. You know, from my point of view, this is no different than the relationship between the board and the clerk. And the clerk is supervised by the chairman of the board, who is authorized by the board to exercise such supervision. So I would see this as being exactly the same thing, that the auditor general is going to report directly to the chair who represents all of the board.
Anybody else who hasn't spoken before I do go back? I have one go back so far. Mrs. Smith.
Thank you. Two things that I want to mention. One thing that I wanted to say today, I think we have to have a referral to the Governance Committee because if we approve this position, then we need to change the charge to the Audit Committee. So I think that's an important piece. I guess the other part that I kind of vehemently disagree with is that I don't believe there should be any day-to-day supervision or oversight. I think that's inappropriate. I think that when we, you know, when you first become a school board member and you learn, the school board has one employee, the superintendent. And I look at how we provide the oversight and we ensure that the voice of the board directs the work of the superintendent. Well, now we're looking at changing it and having two employees, really. Well, the clerk of the board, to me, is a different issue. And I think that we need to ensure that the board, which is all of us, has a say in what happens through this process. Because I think that there is a danger when we build this perception that a subset of the board will lead a direction. And that's why I think that the audit plan is so important. Because we have to ensure that we all have something to say about issues that move forward. And I guess if we're going down a route where now we're going to say that four members of the board get more of a say in the direction of a position, then I'm going to wish we went to an inspector general that would be independent. Because I think there is a danger that starts to occur, whether it really happens or not, that you create a situation where the perception is four people have more say in what happens. And if I was a hired person and I met with four people more regularly and they started telling me things, I might start doing that and then the rest of us are left out of the loop. And so I think part of what we also need to look at is our reporting structure is going to have to become more formalized as we do this. So in looking at the inherent fairness and oversight and responsibility of the whole board, I do not believe there should be anything added to this that says a subset has more power than the rest of us. Obviously, the Audit Committee is going to be involved in the meetings once a month and overseeing what work is happening. But that, anything that's going to be a change or different information needs to come to the whole board. So my strong advocacy is this is something about the board. Thank you.
Okay. I have two more go-backs. I have Mrs. Strauss and Mrs. McLaughlin. Mrs. Strauss?
Currently in our governance manual, the audit plan can be amended at any time by the full board. It's not hard to do. So again, that is direction that comes from the full board and it can be amended. So it is never cast in stone for the entire year. And the board really drives that in the direction and the approval process. It's already there in the governance manual.
Mrs. McLaughlin?
I very much understand Ms. Smith's concerns. And if what was being advocated, as she described, then we should all 12 be concerned. But that isn't what I heard Mr. Stork say, and I know that isn't what I said. We absolutely believe, as do you, that this auditor general should receive official direction from the full board, plain and simple. All Mr. Stork and I were trying to capture is you've got three or perhaps four board members on the Audit Committee who are just going to be working more closely with this auditor general, who may have questions from time to time. And the question was, what I heard Mr. Stork say and where I support him was, whether the word guidance makes people uncomfortable, not direction. We were saying guidance. If that makes people uncomfortable, fine. But we have to just decide, do we want the auditor general to have a sense of, if I've got any questions at all about the audit plan, things going on with the audit plan, do I go to the audit chair? Do I go to the school board chair? And maybe that's what we just need to flesh out. But it concerns me as the public were to listen to this work session and suddenly think that there might be board members, myself or Mr. Stork, who suddenly are looking for the Audit Committee to have a power grab, or that we're naive and not understanding the board's role. Everyone on this board knows that the superintendent is the only person that we, as a full board, have any sort of oversight to. And now we have an auditor general position that we're talking about, and I think it's great. And if we feel like the model we've used with the superintendent is the one that gives everyone the most amount of comfort, I'm full agreement on it. I just simply was saying that I understood Mr. Stork's advocacy that somehow we capture what is the role of the Audit Committee in interfacing with the auditor general because they will have some of the most direct interaction. And if instead we want to say regardless of that, any questions the auditor general has should go straight to the school board chairman, that's fine, too. But maybe that's what the Governance Committee needs to iron out. But I thought it was very important because this is a work session, that we need to make sure that all 12 of us understand it's not about certain board members not understanding where our individual roles and authorities are.
Is there any other board member before I go to Mrs. Weatherman?
I think it's... I think making kind of capture, which is all right. You may not like what you got, but what do these people do? I mean, if I'm the auditor general and I have a job description that says, you know, the board and the audit plan, and I have questions, what do I do with that? I think that needs to be clear in their job description, at least where their... Where the process is. It's... So whatever we may decide, I think we need to decide something. And not to decide something is to decide something. I don't want anybody to misunderstand that. Because the process that we've followed, and I think Ms. Strauss and others can at least speak to this, which is those kinds of questions come up routinely and they have to have an answer from someone. And where does the board want those answers to come from? Those clarifications, if you will, or that information. So let's don't delude ourselves into thinking that somehow or other we're going to, you know, by choosing not to be clear about that, that we're going to actually have an answer for that question because we're not. Somebody's going to step up and that's going to happen. So I would rather be explicit rather than implicit. I'd rather be clear about if we think we're concerned about, we have this fear that somebody's going to take over, you know, then let's at least be clear about, here's what we agree should be the process so that if somebody does do something inappropriate, it'll be clear that that wasn't what we agreed, either the consensus or formal agreement of the board. So I think we need to be clear. It doesn't need to be big, but it needs to be something in there that clarifies for this person what that process is. I know that if I were in their shoes, I would want that.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Stork. Ms. Weatherman?
The only thing I was going to point out is I wanted to make sure the board was assured that the reporting structure essentially would be very similar to what we have now. My... I report to the school board. My supervisor is the chair of the board. If I have questions, I go to the chair of the Audit Committee. I know that I take direction from the Audit Committee, but that the Audit Committee doesn't have the authority to make substantial changes in the work plan without coming back to the board as a whole. So I don't look at that as being a significant change into what you are currently doing. So if that helps alleviate some concerns. And also with regard to the audit plan, Ms. Strauss brought up the point that I wanted to make, and that was, at any point in time throughout the year, if a topic were to come to light that you would want looked at, the process would be the same, whether it be the auditor general or the school board auditor or what have you. The board brings the topic to the Audit Committee. The board decides. The Audit Committee discusses it. We look at the auditability of the topic. And then the board as a whole would make a decision to change the audit plan. Those two things, the reporting structure that I have is very similar to what is being recommended for the auditor general and how the audit plan works. Those two processes, I haven't heard any discussion of that changing. So I think that should give you some comfort as you move forward, that you will still have the same authorities you had in the past. Now it's just a matter of fine-tuning how you want that laid out on paper.
Okay. With that, Mr. Ann Kofax?
I want to thank you, Ms. Weatherman, for defining that for us and bringing that back full circle as to where we currently are and where we need to be. Very... Not very many changes. But I think at the board, Dan, if you, you know, talking about if you want to be something more explicit, but what... If we just took the language from Teresa's current job description, the first line says, you know, receives general direction from the school board, period. And that it doesn't go any further than that. So, Mr. Moon, you know, what we did the last work session, we talked about some changes and we agreed to them. I don't know if we're ready to... You know, it would be my preference that we kind of hammer that out a little bit more if that's where we want to end with that period for the new auditor general position. If not, if we could talk about some wordsmithing because otherwise we may be at a point where we are looking at amendments at the board table, which I don't think is going to be necessary since that's why I had this work session. So if we can get to that point today, that would be my preference.
Thank you, Mr. Ann Kofax. Anybody else for a go-back before I do go back? Mrs. Scherz.
So I don't want us to boil the ocean over this, à la Mr. Velkop. But to some degree, I do agree with Mr. Stork that there has to be the clarity at this point that... About what we're doing. And I don't know, I sense an undercurrent that, you know, we're not quite there, which I guess I'm surprised. I thought by the time that we had arrived here, we would kind of have that matter resolved. So either I have the pulse wrong or... Okay.
Okay. I have Mr. Stork and Mrs. McLaughlin. Hopefully, those two will be the last, unless Ms. Evans, who hasn't spoken yet, wants to speak. Okay. Mr. Stork and Mrs. McLaughlin.
And I just really wanted to... The reason for my passion on this is... And I just really wanted to, the reason for my passion on this is, having been Audit Committee Chair, I, I was uncomfortable at times, I don't think it was clear to me at times what my role was or wasn't. And I think I would have been more, far more comfortable if it was clear, and I'm one of the, the biggest supporters possible of the Governance Manual, that we created that, you know, now eight, nine years ago, because I liked having that clarity. And those of you who know me, I sometimes go back and I cite it, well, here it says right here, here's what we can do, or here's what we can't. Well, then, you don't have that, that question mark. And again, as Audit Chair, I would have, it would have been helpful to me, and I would have felt more confident and comfortable to have that clearer and more explicit. So that's my advocacy, and why I think it's in our interest to do that.
Mrs. McLaughlin.
So I have good news. I think actually in listening, we're, we're all pretty much probably even at a 12, zero consensus that we like how the structure worked with Ms. Weatherman, that she reported to the full Board if she needed guidance, as she noted, she, you know, could go to the Audit Chair, but that any other direct supervisory questions was the Chairman of the School Board. The interesting thing is, it goes back to what Mr. Stork just asked us several conversations ago. If you look at Ms. Weatherman's job description, it says receives general direction from the School Board, period. There's nothing more in there that says supervision's provided through the Chairman of the School Board, that, you know, questions or, you know, issues are brought to the Chair of the Audit Committee. So it goes to what Mr. Stork said earlier, if it's not said, then we are still saying something. So I actually think that we don't need to complicate this, we actually have two positions that we might benefit from just being very clear in what is written, which they both are going to say receives general direction from the School Board, but we should have something, whether it's in the Governance Manual, or whether it's in here, that still says direct supervision's provided by the Chairman of the School Board, and, you know, questions or concerns are either, again, brought to the School Board Chairman, or are they brought to the Audit Committee Chair? But we have an informal process that's been going on that I, I think it needs to be understood. It's not listed in either one of these job descriptions. And if people want comfort in it being explicit, then we need to fix the language in not one, but both.
Okay. Anybody else? Let me ask you some questions, because I need some guidance from, you want to speak? All right?
I guess I.
Yes, Mrs. Smith?
I just wanted to respond to that. I think we should change the job description to be about the School Board, and then we should change the charge to the Audit Committee separately.
Okay. Let me, let me, let me ask you this way. You're looking at, looking at this proposed job description, under supervision and received, given the first line, if we end the first sentence right after School Board and delete the Audit Committee, and add based upon audit plan, is there, I'm going to get to the rest of that later, is there an objection to that particular sentence itself? Receives general direction from the School Board based upon audit plan. Just that sentence itself, whether you have an objection? Yes?
So, the School Board has committees for a reason. So, to, to denude that paragraph from Audit Committee is then to revert back to the Board, then why do we have the Audit Committee to begin with? I mean, the, the point is, is for the School Board to assign an Audit Committee and to help us do our work more efficiently, is to do our work through the Audit Committee.
I guess, you know, I could have done better, should have done better. My suggestion is, my, my suggestion is, change the first sentence as I stated, and then charge the Governance Committee to clarify, clarified role of the Audit Committee vis-à-vis School Board and Auditor General. We still have a time, we just, I want to be able, for the Board to take on action on the creation of this new position with a job description, so that we can start advertising, receive applications, and go through this hiring process rather than holding up the whole discussion. And as Chairman, there are no effects indicated that I would prefer not to have this kind of discussion at the pool table in Thursday night, without knowing which direction we may be going at this point. So if we could go, and anybody is, of course, anybody has a right to propose any amendment of his or her liking. Okay? Yes?
So, can I ask the, the contemplation of the scope that you're asking the Governance Committee, I mean, are you, are you talking about fundamentally changing the role or, or scope of the Audit Committee? Because if by approving this, we trigger that, then that would not be something I would be.
I was.
I mean, I'm trying to figure out the, the degree to which governance has to tweak something in order for this position to come forward. I mean, it's, it's the general direction from the School Board Audit Committee. So I, I'm trying to figure out why that doesn't work. Like, why we would have to change that.
There seems to be a, a practice thus far, which has been working, and I understand that Mr. Stork has expressed some discomfort as a former Audit Committee Chair, because that's not written down anywhere. If he could write down, you know, put it into writing, what our practice has been so far with the internal auditor, and just to translate it into this new position, and see whether the, all of us would be able to accept that. And I am asking, I'm asking Governance Committee to look into that. You know, other than that, I'm not asking, you know, expanding or changing the role of Audit Committee in any other way. That would be my proposal. Ms. Evans?
So as Chair of Governance, I do want to make sure I'm clear on this. You're saying, take out the word Audit Committee in that first sentence, correct? You're saying receives, receives general direction from the School Board, period, correct?
Based upon the audit plan.
Based on the audit plan, and then you're asking then.
And then charge Governance Committee to.
The Governance Committee with taking a look at the charge to the Audit Committee, to, and to see if we, if we need to change the role of the Audit Committee based on this. Is that correct?
Based upon this and our practice.
And our current practice.
Our current practice, because that is not in writing in the Governance Manual.
And do you need that before we vote on this?
No.
You do not?
No, we don't.
All right. Thank you.
Is that, is that acceptable to most of us? If, if, if then, I will change the agenda item for the Thursday night, just changing the first sentence to be, to read, receives general direction from the School Board based upon the audit plan. We'll end the sentence right here. If anybody has disagrees and come up with an amendment, just let the rest of us know as soon as possible. With that, Madam Chair, Madam Clerk, next step. Mr. McLaughlin says the next step is a dinner. Next step is simple, just to, just to ask him, charging the Governance Committee to look into, you know, putting into writing the, our practice and the role of Audit Committee vis-à-vis the new position to be created. Okay, I think everybody understood that. With that, with that, this work session is adjourned, and I think I have made up about 20 minutes.
We are so grateful to you. We will now take a dinner break. We really do have a dinner break. Let's do this as quick, you know, if we can't, like, take like a 15-minute in there, but if you're not done, let's bring our dinners back out here and then start with the next budget work session around, let's do that at 6:10.